The parapet is outside of the chambers as well. So let's hear objections from you folks. I guess I will go ahead and call the meeting for order, the Oregon City Council Work Study Session, and ask you all to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, reliving in justice for all. Okay. Randy, you don't have anything else?
Yes.
Oh, here we have one. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a discussion on our water rates or proposed changes to the water rates. I think, Nick, are you going to do this?
I think we need to bring Jackie and Katie over.
Okay. Can you bring Jackie?
I think Jackie will go first and introduce the subject.
There they are.
Jackie first, and then who's the other?
Katie over as well, yeah.
Good evening, council. Thank you. I'm here this evening to facilitate a discussion about some water rate work that the Public Works Department, Community Development Department, and the Finance Department have been working on. And with that, I'd like to introduce Katie Isaacson, our consultant.
Welcome, Katie.
Hello. Thank you, Jackie. Will I be able to share presentation?
Yep.
Host disabled.
Host will fix that.
Yes. Come on down.
You cannot start sharing while other participant is sharing. The agenda is up.
There you go.
Okay.
I'll try it.
Good.
Yep.
Get a little bigger for you?
There you go.
Nice.
Okay, good evening, council. As Jackie said, we've been working on the water rate study, and we're just bringing you up to date and letting you know where we are and how we're headed. So we are, have looked at the financial outlook for water. We are looking out 10 years. And the last time you adopted rates, they were for five years. So keep those timeframes in mind. We are looking at the capital improvement program or making sure we're considering that in the rate study. And we're discussing rate structure adjustments for conservation. We met with the Utilities Committee last week and just met with the Finance Committee to give them an update prior to this. I always like to give you an idea of what's going on in the industry. And American Waterworks Association, is the industry association considered industry standards? Every year, they do a survey of people in the water industry to come up with, you know, what are the top focuses, challenges, so forth? And I thought this would be interesting to you to know that the three top challenges that everyone in the industry is looking at is the renewal and replacement of aging infrastructure, the financing for capital improvements, and looking at the long-term drinking water supply availability. And for Port Orchard, all of these apply. And all of these have been taken into account in doing your water system plan, which is in your comp plan and which we are basing the rate study on. The goals are really important for rate studies. So we end up with solutions to what we hope to achieve. It's really important that our water utility stays self-sufficient, that the revenue we bring in stays for water and anything left over will go into reserves for water. We want to make sure we're looking at the operations, debt, capital, and reserves. So all four key areas. We want to be sure that we're looking at funding for the capital improvements that are in the adopted comp plan and that were used for the capital facilities charge, which we are. We're taking all those into consideration. We want to be sure we are promoting conservation of water. And we always look for opportunities to increase equity among customers by adjusting the rate structure. So how important are water rates to the water utility? The, what the money you bring in from water sales is 98% of the revenue. So it's very important. The other areas, you get some from inspection, reviews and planning services, and some from rents and leases. But when we talk about the water rates, 75% of the revenue comes from residential, 21% from commercial, and 4% from irrigation. This was in 2022. Or based on the 2022 budget. So when we go out and we look, we do a six-year outlook. And the basis of it is your 2022 budget. That's our basis that we start. And any known adjustments to that are built in. Then we make projections going out the six years. So our water operating revenue is our biggest portion of the expenses. And we assume that these will continue and these will increase at, we're using 3%, I believe, for the escalation for cost due to inflation. Or then we have our red sliver is our existing water debt. We need to be sure we can pay for that. And then the two slices on top, these are all about the water capital improvement plan. We know that borrowing will be required to carry out those capital improvements. And this takes into account, the green is the water CIP that will be funded by rates. And the slice on top is that for the repaying the debt for those CIP. Now, when we look at our capital improvement program, I've put this together by colors to indicate the funding source so that we can keep this, you know, big picture into mind. In the orange are the ones that we will need to borrow for, that the utility will be borrowing for. These will be behaved, repaid by rates and by capital facilities charges. And the percentage of each is based on the allocations that we did for the capital facilities charge and in the comp plan. We use those same percentages. And now we're trying to make sure that we get the rate portion taken, taken into account. So the purple portion is that for new development and will be paid for by developers or by capital facilities charges as the new connections come in. The green section is that to be paid for rates and reserves. Now, remember, aging infrastructure is a key element. And we want to be sure that our rates can take that into account. So the utility has structured programs annual. So we have annual funding for these critical elements. We have pressure-reducing valves. We have main replacements. You have a hydraulic model that has shown what areas need to be replaced first. And then you have may, annual main replacement program. You have a lot of mains are between one and four inches in diameter. And these need to be upgraded to six to eight inches of diameter with current standards. Now, what this means is you have funding every year. And then it's up to the city to prioritize the highest priority projects then get done first. And Bay Street is your first priority project. To, in order to complete that main replacement, it's going to take several years of the annual main replacement program, but it'll be directed to the Bay Street. After that, you'll be able to look at your next highest priorities and so on. You also have annual valve replacement and annual hydrant replacement. So you can see that the different key elements to your water system, we are getting annual contributions from rates. So the existing customers that are making use of the system are making annual contributions to take care and upgrade these, do system replacement. So we put all those pieces together and we did our six-year outlook. And what it looks like is your current base rate is 8150 for two months for your typical residential meter that's three-quarter inch. So it looks like with an increase of $2 per month to the base rate or $4 per two-month bill, as well as planned use of reserves and new debt for the rate-funded CIP, you will be able to take care of the needs for the next five years. This is on the base rate. And in addition, the water usage rate and the larger meter sizes would also need to be adjusted, you know, proportionately to take up their share. All of this outlook then makes sure that the water fund balance meets the policy, including the cash flow reserve of three months of operating expense. Now, one thing that we do have included in this base analysis is, or scenario A as it shows, the potential for a utility tax increase of 3% from 5% up to 8%. In order to be conservative, to increase the probability that our predictions will come true and you will be able to fund the program, we included that as the base. Then the question was, if there is no change, what would that impact be? That would be 50 cents per month would be the difference. So that's our outlook. And if there was no change to the rate structure, that's what the recommendation could be. We do want to look at, in strengthening the message to promote conservation. And this is the opportunity to do so. And the reason that we would is to improve so that we could move closer to true conservation rates, that we could increase equity amongst the different customer classes. Those that pay more will, I mean, those that use more would end up paying more. And that would be amongst your various customers. It would allow your customer bills to reflect their efforts. So if a home is making a concerted effort to do conservation, their bill should go down. That's what we're trying to achieve. Those customers that choose to water their gardens would pay more. Those that don't have yards and no gardens to water, then they would pay less. And also, in the big picture, you are always looking to receive points towards a foster whole issue. So here's what we would be talking in the residential rate structure. Currently, you have two base rates. You have one that includes 0 to 3,000 gallons and one that includes from 3,001 to 5,000 gallons. So if you use 3,000 gallons, you pay 5350 for two months. If you use 4,000 gallons, you pay 8150. Or if you use 5,000 gallons, you pay 8150. It doesn't vary from 3,001 to 5,000. So in order to promote this conservation, take the next step. What we're discussing is going for consolidating and having one base rate that would be at a lower amount, eliminating this higher base rate and adding a tier to the usage so that those that have, starting at 3,001, you would pay for your actual water usage. And the bills would vary by that. Higher usage, of course, would pay more. In order to make this work, by reducing this 8150, we would hope could be lowered some. It would not go to 5350. We know we need more revenue in our outlook, right? Our $4 per two-month bill. But this is a discounted rate at the lower one. So it would be somewhere in between. And the revenue, the lower revenue that we get from our base rate, we would have to make up well in our usage rates. So our usage rates would end up going higher. And we'd be shifting the burden and who would be paying that share for the water. I always think it's interesting to see how your neighbors are doing comparable utilities. And remember that every system is different and has different sources, different contracts, and different customers. And each one needs to be self-sufficient. So currently, Port Orchard is higher than the rest. We've known that all along. And we're looking at an opportunity to be able to potentially bring that more in line by if we're able to reduce that base rate from the 8150, we could bring down the rate for that average customer using 7,000 gallons or bring it closer. And how much, it's like we're shifting from the fixed rate to the variable. So if we went all the way in one step, it would be a lot of burden on the usage rate and potentially could be variable revenue. So the thought is to have one in between and take that step to just include 3,000 gallons. I have converted all of these rates to be comparable to you. Your usage rates are per 1,000 gallons. And their other utilities here, they're all in 100 cubic feet. But I've converted their rates to match per 1,000 gallons. And each of them have a different number of tiers. You have six tiers in your structure, usage, right? The 5,000 to 10,000, 10,000, so on and so forth. Some of these, like Gig Harbor, has only one tier. Kitsap has four tiers. And you are the only one that includes some water in the base rate. The others all start paying at the first gallon. Again, I talked about how that could be a big swing, a big impact to the volume rate. So taking the interim step might be the way to go. Kitsap PUD, their water at their lowest tier is $1.92 per thousand. And at their highest tier is $10.59 per thousand. And as you step up the tiers, as you use more, the rate per thousand gallons gets higher. That's how we're promoting conservation. And the highest and the most expensive water is the last water and the water to meet your peaks. So that, that tiered structure follows that very well. Gig Harbor is another example. They just have one tier, so all of their water is at the same rate. We would be able to, so while your high rate would go up, the low rate would still be at zero. And, but it would still be within the range of what others are showing. It, we need to be self-sufficient and make sure that your needs are covered. So then when we talk about larger meter sizes, you have a category in your code that says multi, multi and larger meter sizes. And multifamily residential, right now that you have a base rate per unit plus a meter differential. So as a larger meter size goes up, you pay more. They, if we were to, right now, they include 5,000 gallons per unit. But if we were to change it to 3,000, as the first, the, the base rate includes 3,000, then we would include 3,000 per unit. And look at this as residential. They would be considered residential. Then the other non-residential, commercial, government, irrigation, they would be considered non-residential. And a base rate, whoops, sorry, end of the day, my trigger finger here. They would go by meter size. So the larger the meter size, the more the base rate would be. And it would include 3,000 gallons per meter. We'll talk about, I'll show you the American Waterworks Association, AWWA. Industry standard has meter equivalencies by meter size that we could use to tell us how much to charge for the various meter sizes. And the water usage rates would be the same as residential, as they currently are. So you can, shoot, you can see the various meter sizes here. And you currently have 0 to 5,000 gallons included in the base rate. They, everyone pays a 8150 base rate, plus they pay a differential that goes up by meter size. I've included them all together here in the total 2022. So a three-quarter inch meter pays 8150. A one-inch meter pays 8750. And a six-inch meter pays $357. So when I divide these, the 8750 is 1.07 times our three-quarter inch residential meter. And our six-inch meter is four times our three-quarter inch meter. So that is very narrow compared to the AWWA standard factors. We go, our one-inch meter is at 1.67. And the six-inch meter is at 33 times. Now, these differentials are based on the capacity of these meters and how much can flow. So when you think about a base rate, you think that any customer has a meter and they can turn that meter on their fixtures at any time. And the system must provide that much capacity to them. And it's on demand. So many utilities use these AWWA factors in calculating the base rate. And the, whatever the base rate is set, that would be for the three-quarters. And then after that, you would multiply this factor to determine what that new base rate would be. One thing that I'd like to add too, your commercial customers right now pay this smaller differential. Plus, if there's multiple units in a building, they pay a base rate for each of those commercial units. We would say by going to AWWA, that would recognize the difference between the meter size and commercial units would no longer apply. So some commercial, out of this, some commercial would be paying more and some would be paying less. So we're, that's where we are today. And when I say we, there's a committee, the rate study committee is including the Public Works Department, Finance, Community Development, and of course, the mayor, discussing the, the pluses and minuses of keeping the current rate structure or making adjustments toward conservation. And no decision tonight, we're, will be, you know, coming back with examples. And the thought is that to get to the adoption of water rates, of course, there would have to be a rate ordinance with a first and second reading. And that ends my presentation.
Katie, I have a question for you. Back on the, your comparative chart of other systems.
Yes.
I'm assuming that each of those other systems has a base rate.
Yes. Each one does. It's not shown here in this comparison. It's actually quite a bit of effort to compare apples to apples because each one of these utilities has a different type of structure. They have, they all have a base rate. They all charge for some kind of water. But they have different number of tiers, different definition of tiers. And the water rate coming out of that is all different.
So my assumption is that these other utilities have a, a base rate that pretty much provides a regular stream of income to the utility. And then the variability is what their per gallon or a thousand gallon rate would be dependent upon the number of tiers they have.
Yes, that. And what percentage of their overall revenue requirements is, are they funding with their base rates?
Yeah. I would share for the rest of the council, as Katie mentioned, we did talk about this just a few minutes ago on the Finance Committee. Yeah. You know, there, there's a lot of unanswered questions yet. Based on, at least with the committee's interest was, we would like to have a little more information on going to a, a different structure. How that would impact our current rate pair so that we could see who's going to benefit from this and who is going to be charged more. Because at the end of the day, we have to have a fixed amount come in to keep the utility solvent, so.
Yeah, to add to that, we had talked about getting some very specific answers, right? A specific apartment complex, a specific, a couple of specific single-family homes, you know, an office building, you know, things right here. Port Orchard, you can see, you plug them in, because they may come up with four or five different models. It'd be easy to see, you know, of those differences. So I think this is a great overview, but a lot of data yet to, yet to come our way for additional consideration.
And council, there's one thing that I would like to add, if I may. And that's to keep in mind that moving toward conservation rates will give us a leg up, if you will, with the Foster Pilot Project. Because that's one of the things that Department of Ecology is pushing towards the Joint Legislative Task Force, is to have a very robust conservation programs for new water rights.
Mayor, do you have anything that you want to add or?
No, I think we've hit it pretty well. You know, that as we talked at the Finance Committee, we have more work to do. We've given you, if we don't change anything, this is what it costs, about $2 more a month. And, but we'd like to move towards a conference conservation model. It likely won't be a wholesale change, but we want to move that direction. And we need to provide some relevant examples of, you know, your average, you know, home out there, a low-end user, you know, an average user and a high-end user, and some commercial examples so we can show you, you know, what the effects are on the, with different proposals. So we're hoping, we're hopeful, maybe that meeting, we have one meeting in August. Maybe we would have a discussion item there in three weeks.
Council, do you have any question?
I don't know who to look at when I'm talking. Do I look at the camera or do I look at you guys? It doesn't matter. I really like the movement towards conservation. I think that, that, that's important in general, and I like the idea of equity. One thought that popped into my mind is, I can see where we're coming up with the rates and then seeing how they actually fit through real-world examples. What if we wanted to keep the same amount of revenue and we figure out how to divide it differently based on the conservation usage? And adjust, you know, reverse, adjust rates.
That's pretty much what we're doing.
Is that okay?
Exactly what she showed.
Okay. What we're doing is, we have to have the fixed amount to keep the utility solvent. How do we divide that by?
Okay. Okay, that sounds good. Because it sounded like, okay, we know this is going by $2 or $4 a month. But I thought, okay, well, that's, we're already increasing the base.
No, the other model, you could see where that base rate could actually be reduced because more of that burden is being paid by those who are using more water. That's what she.
No, and I like, I like, I really like the direction of.
So spreadsheet out, take a look at it, find what that is. You know, that, one of the things we discussed, the irony in all of this is the more you move in this direction, and if you're successful with conservation, then our rate revenue will go down. Then we'll have to charge more. And so you could actually pay more per thousand gallons of water because you chose to save water.
Yeah, it's like if we were successful conserving, we might have less revenue.
Right. So, and we have to maintain that, that fixed amount.
Yeah.
So we can, so that's what we have to look at always. So I think, John, the bottom line was they're looking just for the council to say, go ahead with the continued study of this. As opposed to the status quo, I think everybody's kind of nodding their head yes. Yeah, I'd like to see some real-world examples for our next discussion. At a school in there, that's what high school looks like.
I think the concept is, let's continue to look at this conservation method. I think the concept is let's continue to look at this conservation method to see how that might play out versus just simply adding bucks a month to everybody's bill.
So Sean, your point about a school or a jail, you gotta remember too, that those two biggest users, the school and the high school, serve the entire, well, the jail serves the entire county. And this high school serves the all of South Kitsap. And we don't want a scenario where this residents of Port Orchard are subsidizing those large facilities. And I believe today are in our rates, they do.
Yeah, no, I have a point. I absolutely agree with that, but I think we should at least have the data, right? Because.
Yeah, we will.
You know, blindside anybody. What are we looking at in a timetable for this, Mayor?
The, well, I, my goal is the first weekend in August, but if that slips, we're looking at the first meeting in September or the September work study to bring back those examples. We, our goal is to have this in place for the next budget. So it is not urgent, but it's, it's amazing how fast time gets away from us. So, you know, we need two readings, we need some public, you know, the opportunity for the public to comment on this. So, you know, September at the latest to get you guys those examples and it'd be nice to get it to you in August. And then, you know, action in the latter, in the fourth quarter at the latest.
So for 2023?
2023 is when we would, we're proposing these, the new structure or rates going to affect.
Thank you. And as part of this discussion, like Katie mentioned, the potential increase in utility tax that we've been talking about, which, talking about designating that revenue to a different project, i.e. the street maintenance, but still it would be added to my personal bill, so we need to look at it. It's entirely.
And John, you touched on, I wasn't going to dive too deep into that tonight. We want to have, you know, holistic discussion. I gave you guys a pretty good presentation back in the, at the retreat. You know, what you saw here tonight is a proposed 3% increase, which is 50 cents to the base rate. But also charging from an equity standpoint, the Bremerton and the West Sound customers, that, that utility tax, they currently aren't paying it at all. So to capture that new revenue, a portion of our existing utility tax and package it into a dedicated street preservation and maintenance program. And what I showed you previously was 1.5 million dollars a year. And we put almost a million this year, this budget, a year into the budget. So it'd be a step up in our street preservation and a dedicated source of funding. Since that presentation though, I've learned that Bremerton, we've already given notice to the West Town Utility that as of January 1st, we intend to collect that tax. We don't have a franchise agreement or a vehicle to collect that tax on, from the service area that's served by Bremerton. And they're currently charging a 50% surcharge and a 12% utility tax to our citizens that they serve. So our ask in that franchise agreement is for them, because that money's going into their general fund versus our general fund. We don't like that, but remember, until we have our own water sources, I don't know, that we can throw too big of a fit about it. We, so we're asking that question, we're negotiating a franchise agreement. And but I don't believe, if we can't get Bremerton to move off of that, I don't think it's a huge amount of money to our general fund, you know, 100,000, I would guesstimate. But I don't think we could in good conscience lay an 8% tax on someone that's paying a 50% surcharge and a 12% utility tax already to Bremerton.
How many are there, Rob?
It's the households, I couldn't tell you. It's everything on the north side of Old Clifton Road. So the two phases of the ridge.
It's seven.
Meadows, yeah. Nick, you know how many customers?
Yeah, 762 is the total.
762 customers, so it's not insignificant. But we, you know, we've got to be fair and equitable. And that's what it was about. And I didn't, when, when I gave you the presentation, I didn't realize that they were already paying Bremerton a utility tax.
Okay.
More to come.
Any other questions? So Dave, do you have any questions?
Well, I actually liked, I liked the idea of the new rate structure. If it, if it actually pencils out the idea of conservation, working towards that end is something I think we, we really need to get started with as soon as possible. There are quite a few rate pairs that already have asked us to look into something along these lines. I think it would go over well with our citizens.
Okay, there isn't any more. I guess I need to check with the clerk in my haste to get this meeting going and Friday ended early. I missed the opening statement, is that required about this being? Okay. All right, since we're all here together, short two members, I guess then we'll go ahead bypass that. Moving to the next item, which is.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you, Katie.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
The next item is the utility taxes. So I guess that's.
And John, I just gave that presentation.
So thank you, Mayor, you're allowing me to get this meeting over sooner than projected. So we're way ahead of schedule. Moving on to the next one is the park impact fees. And I know.
And that we're going to.
So before the council tonight, for the third or fourth time since April, is the park impact fee issue. Currently, the city charges park impact fees on residential development at $811 per single family house and $584 per multifamily unit. We adopted a new parks plan on June 28th of this year. And in that parks plan is a pretty hefty capital improvement program. And while we don't expect that we're going to build all 120 million dollars of the projects in the immediate six-year term, we have identified a handful of projects which are likely to go forward in the next six-year period. And a major funding source for those projects would be impact fees. In the staff report that is in the packet, there are six projects listed, which four of them all relate to or are surrounding the new community event center project for which we have some funding from the Kitsap Public Facilities District. The other projects are a portion of the Bay Street Industry Path and the Stormwater Park on Sherman. And those projects, based on our capital facilities plan, are estimated at about 15 million dollars. Now, we could spend, we could fund all 15 million dollars from park impact fees under the framework that has been created. But it is likely, and actually we submitted a grant application earlier today for ALIA funding through the Recreation Conservation Office for a half million dollars. And so there are 50% match grants from RCO that are available that could contribute to these projects. The Stormwater Park is both a stormwater facility and a park. And so Stormwater may end up having a share of that project. But, you know, realistically, we need certainly more than 10 million dollars in funding to come from somewhere, whether it's general fund or, or park impact fees. So we've provided, initially, we started out with a proposal that would have funded 70% of the park program with 70% of the cost of maintaining existing level of service would have been paid by development. We since reduced that to 57%. And at the June meeting, council discussed an option of phasing that fee in so that wouldn't be quite as big of an initial jump for possibly six months or a year. So in the staff report that's before you tonight, we present three alternatives. One of them, which is going forward at 57% effective September 1st with no step increase. Alternative two would start at 35% increasing to 57% on March 1st of 2023. That would have the effect of going from $811 per single family house to $3,200 per single family house and then increase again to about $5,800 per house on March 1st. And then alternative three would be a two-step increase, which would go from 35 to 46 to 57%. And you could stagger that over six months periods or, or six months and then again an adjustment in a year, however council prefers. We did discuss this at the finance committee tonight and the finance committee's recommendation would be to actually set the initial six-month step at 45% and then increase to 57% on March 1st of 2023. And but, you know, that's, that's all something that can be, you can, you can basically set these limits or these numbers anywhere you like, so long as 100% of the cost of making existing level of service is not paid by development. It can't be, it can't be the full 100%. And it certainly could be 0% if you didn't want a park impact fee or anyone in between. And I did share a calculator where we were playing with the numbers in the finance committee meeting. We, we looked at, you know, for the first six months going to 35 versus 45% versus 57%. And it's about $300,000 in lost revenue per 10% decrease over a six-month period based on the development that we're projecting at this time to be permitted in the next six months. In the, in the calculator, we did include CPI adjustments. We also include the assumption that the McCormick Woods Park Development Agreement, which is, has been applied for and which is likely coming to council either August 9th or the first meeting in September, would be approved. They're proposing to build a pretty major expansion at McCormick Village Park and a couple of other public amenities in McCormick West and McCormick Woods that would be available to all residents of the city. And so they'd be getting about a $2,000 credit per housing unit built because they're providing these public amenities. And so that is factored into the, the model that I had created. And if you'd like, I can share it on the screen. I don't know, the finance committee wants to pull that up.
I think it would be good.
It would be helpful to see how this calculator is.
Sure, let me just type it in the passcode here.
And if anybody else too. Very. Use a variable number, you can see how it changes the assumptions or the funds kind of.
I'm going through this thing. Randy, can you allow me to share on the system there? I typed in the passcode, but I think you have it stuck. Or do I need to go through Zoom for?
Oh, I see. Are you trying to connect?
That's what I was trying to do, but I can go through Zoom as well. You'll have to make the panelists.
Yeah, there you go. Then you should be able to share.
Just make the panelists, not just me, if I'm already there.
Oh, okay.
And I'm going to share on a screen now. You have to enable, oh, you have to stop your share. Okay, so I have the, the Excel spreadsheet that I shared with the finance committee. At the top of the spreadsheet, I have all the expected development over the next six years. I then can manipulate the percentage charged to, to growth, to maintain existing level of service. And so if I reduce 57% for the first six months, the green number will change. That is your total revenue over the six and a half year period, the rest of 2022 plus 23, 29. And so when I change that to 35%, you'll see about a $600,000 reduction in, in total revenue. So that went from 10.6 to about a little over $10 million in total revenue. And of course, the projects we're trying to build are closer to $15 million. So the finance committee actually recommended that we set this at 45% for the first six months. And that brings us up to 10.3 billion dollars in revenue. You could do a two-step increase where you go from 35 to 45 to 57, which is alternative three in my staff report. That lowers us into the 9.5, 9.6 billion dollar range.
I would ask, Jay pointed out to be at the finance committee meeting that when, at least when I spoke to this issue about phasing the implementation, in my mind, it was we can lower the beginning, but increase the subsequent steps. So at the end of the day, we would, you know, maintain the amount of revenue that we need. But in some of the other issues that we have to deal with, like McCormick agreement that we have, we're kind of stuck at that 57%. So really, whatever we do to that first step is going to be revenue loss, if you will, over just implementing 57 throughout the whole start. I personally still would be comfortable with phasing just because it's quite a, quite a shock to go from where we are to any level, even at 45%. But I think that would at least give folks time to then prepare for the increase to 57% come March.
John, I forgot to ask, a little bit of a side note, is this the last of our impact fees that we addressed? You know, needing to bring up? I guess you need to look more.
So the, they recommend for transportation, especially because your tip changes constantly, to do that every three to five years, we will likely look at the traffic impact fees again in 2025 after we've finished our comprehensive plan. We don't have fire impact fees and it's, it's always possible if the fire district decided they needed additional fire stations or equipment that they would ask for that, but you're not obligated to approve it. The school impact fees haven't been adjusted since 2008, but if they're going to build new schools at some point, they may ask to increase the, the school impact fee amount. But so far they haven't. And I think more importantly, the school impact fee for Kitsap County in the South Kitsap School District and for Bremerton in the South Kitsap School District is lower than what you pay in Port Orchard.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, Nick, what we would be faced with, other than these other agencies and what they may do is adjustments to our current impact fees, not adding yet another new one on top.
We've, we've addressed, we've addressed all of our ones and brought them up too.
Correct.
Where we've been.
There are four categories of growth management act-based impact fees. It's fire, streets, schools, and parks.
Sir, last revised.
We adopted that in 2021, January, February. Yeah, it doubled from about 25, 52 per PPM trip to 5,000 per PPM trip. And then we added the CPI adjustment, so it's currently at 5,200, I believe.
Fred, you're a little difficult, you're a little difficult to hear. If you could speak up a little bit, maybe talk towards the TV.
Which one of us?
Fred.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, look at the, look at the microphone.
So I was gonna say, you're just, we're just looking for consensus building on which one of the now four alternatives, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So what we just looked at in there, you know, again, we were looking at the 35 to 57 and then we went to 45, right? See, it's fairly significant. And the other reality is just kind of what's in our pipeline over the next year. Right, and you have the ability, I think, to take this starting number from low and just lose all of that. Right, how do you catch up?
Right.
And so where do we find that happy medium? Remember, her testimony, we started at 70, it went to 57, you know, to 35, you know, just at what point can we just try to find that happy medium? We have a pretty sheer responsibility to the city's plan, right? And so we have to look at it from a different staple. And this puts an onus on us to be looking for grants to make up that just approximately $5 million difference. So we do have skin in the game. It's just not the developers.
And I want to point out in the development model, we did not include all phases of McCormick. And McCormick actually thinks that they're going to build most of their, even, even after the economy. I talked to them last week and they're still planning to try to deliver 400 last year is what they're working towards. I did not include all of their development areas because I just, I don't see that as being realistic. But it's possible that other development comes into the mix. Things, projects that we haven't even heard of yet may come in and apply for permits and get added to this, this table. And then McCormick may go faster, they may go slower, but I'm, I'm just trying to give you a best guess for the projects. I feel fairly certain about, there are projects I don't feel certain about that aren't in this list that could, could get across the finish line and, like I said, new, new projects as well.
And we talked about that in the finance committee, about who's, first of all, are we going to use? Because so many variables, what we could deal with is what we know today. We might be quite successful in grant applications, which may affect, you know, the amount. We may not be as successful as Nick pointed out. There might be additional growth beyond what we modeled here. Uh we may not be as successful as Nick pointed out, there might be additional growth beyond what we modeled here. So. Yes, for sure. It's going to change. We just don't know how much in which direction.
I may, I think the the two bookends are really thirty five is probably as low as we can go because we need to be able to cover. I Nick and when Nick and I developed that that thirty five percent, it was. Uh not going backwards because we've got an eight hundred dollar park impact fee right now. And we needed to go to a number that after the credit to McCormick for the improvements they're going to do, that we came out whole. So that's that's the the baseline and then fifty percent fifty seven percent is the top end. And so what are you comfortable? Is it thirty five or is it something more? And do you want an intermediate middle step? That's really the the discussion points.
Are we incentivizing developers to get into permits sooner? Oh, do you think?
Absolutely, though. There's only so many projects that are going to be ready to permit in the next six months. There's certainly a lot of single family lots that are available that have not pulled permits. I would expect maybe a little bit of a rush on single family lots, although. Single family builders builders are the ones who are starting to get a little bit skittish about the economy and are kind of. Moving to a sell the house before you build it type model, at least a few of them are. But the multifamily projects are charging ahead right now. Um we just issued the Plisco apartments over by the high school. That's now moving dirt. The development agreement with the Tarrigan Town Homes is all they've already locked in their impact fee in their development agreement, so they're not affected by this one way or another. They're pulling their permits soon. And other than that, there's there's two or three apartment complexes that may get in and get issued within the next six months. Um and you know, maybe a one to two hundred houses, worst case scenario, that take advantage of this.
Yeah, and I and I would probably answer that. I'd add a little bit to that. If we were going, if we're contemplating seventy versus thirty five, there's no motivation. Right? I think like difference between seventy and thirty five and seventy forty five, I don't think there's really additional motivation, right? It's just, I think it's hurting our ability to.
Fifty seven, fifty seven and forty five or fifty seven thirty five.
Which why the finance committee, we just kind of land on that forty five number.
I'm happy with that.
Forty five.
Phasing it in.
But just the two steps.
Yes. So any comment?
About what was the reminder to the date of that? So we would go March, March forty five, March one.
March one is we would implement it at the end of February, but it's like days between that and when we get the the call. Measurement that we would be applying as well. So like theory. For all practical purposes, it would be March one that we would have a great change.
It's it's two steps. You're gonna have, you're gonna go to fifty seven on March twenty seventh after hours. And then the CPI occurs on that Sunday and then Monday morning we open, it'll be uh just a one step increase, but I'll include the CPI and just.
Right, and the effective date of the forty five.
September first uh is is doable. We can do September fifteenth if you don't want to um wait to take that step since. I I think the building community is pretty well aware of this now, so we could implement it sooner if wanted. Uh we could do August fifteenth or started on Monday, in the middle of August, it's up to you.
Like the first of September, it's a nice clean day. As you said, the nodding our heads or.
The first of September is a Thursday, so maybe the on the fifth is is Labor Day. But we can do it on midweek.
Cindy, what's your preference?
Which one? The date or the amount?
Amounts, percentages.
I'm leaning towards forty five.
Sounds like September one, bring it forward, so.
And that's already on on the agenda. We were just continued it and then we kicked it back to this work study, so it's already, there's already a motion on the floor. And uh we'll uh we'll have that keyed up for you next week.
Okay, moving on, public works structure, Mayor, that's uh your item.
Yes, so um. You know, with Mark's departure, it it allows us to take a maybe a moment to just step back and look at things and. Um cities smaller than us, you know, and and where we we were much smaller here ten years ago. Uh you know, directors wear multiple hats. I know, know Nick at Eatonville wore a couple of different hats. Uh there a- and uh we're growing and we had an organizational set assessment uh done with our last surveys, salary survey. And it recommended a different structure in our public works department. A- and uh so with Mark's departure. I I was planning on bringing that forward after Mark's retirement, which I thought was two or three weeks or two, excuse me, two or three years away. Um but uh you know, as you know, last meeting, Mark said his farewells and he's on the payroll. Uh I I'm kind of on terminal leave until the first week in August. But uh you know, for all intents and purposes, I got about a week and a half out of Mark from when he gave his notice. So. Um we started down a path that um to. Uh I thought by next week, I I would have, we would have a a new org chart for you guys to look at and things to consider. But as we talked through this, Noah brought up some valid concerns related to cost allocation. In particular, related to our engineering department. Um and the planning department can't be paid for with uh enterprise funds, but our engineers do a lot of work on our utilities. And we were concerned, the concern is we don't want to have any unintended consequences from these changes. So we're going to slow down a little bit. And next week, uh I am, I'm I'm going to bring forward. Um two new job descriptions to split Mark's job in half. And then make interim appointments thereafter to two existing employees. Our assistant city engineer becoming the city engineer and our public works uh supervisor manager, it becomes the public works director. A- and uh then take the next sixty days or so and just vet all of the, you know. Making, just to make sure we don't have any unintended consequences to this. The um. You know, the real, the really only undecided is where the, we have an engineering group and where they report. Uh whether it's in into a new structure with the next department. Or they continue to to report to the public works director who isn't an engineer. Uh and uh so that's kind of where we're at. I just want to. You talk to you guys about this a little bit before I bring two new job descriptions uh to to next week's council meeting. So, yeah, questions for me? Jake?
Yeah, Mayor, so is there any certifications that Mark had? Uh that you know, they're leaving that we won't be able to cover uh immediately with one of the interns?
So. There is one little thing a- that it's not even a little thing, but uh so the engineer, an engineer, we have a, we have a. Completely qualified engineer and our assistant city engineer that will be the city engineer. There is um right of way is one, one area. Um the right of way acquisition and acquisitions and related to the um. Uh the pathway, real estate purchases. So uh likely Nick or someone is going to go get that certification. Um so that they can, and if we have to, we could contract with the county for that. Um but Mark held a certification uh that allowed, that allowed him to be the agent uh through our, you know, in our city for. The property purchases. So uh he's still on the payroll until uh. Till the August, I think the fifth or the sixth of August, we might have one more uh purchase come forward between now and then. Um and if they do, he's he's still our agent in that capacity, but that's the one thing that we've identified. Of course, there's a laundry list of projects and things he was doing that uh we're still in the process of. Dividing up and making sure that we're not dropping any balls uh in 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 that area, but uh. I I just think it is prudent to um do this in in an interim step manner versus uh. Doing doing this wrong and having to redo it.
Good, thank you.
Other questions? Just comfortable? Yeah, okay, you're comfortable with the scenario then?
So basically, the the interim city engineer would be accountable to Nick.
He wouldn't, he uh he would be, I can't do that at this time. Right now, we would maintain the current structure where the engineers are reporting to the public works director on an interim basis. And that's the structure, that's the structure, that's the structure that we have right now. It's not ideal. Um but I have to have a city engineer and I need a public works director. And and I, so and. So I'm going to break the two apart, but in our current structure. Um. Yeah, that's by putting them, attaching them to Nick could cause unintended consequences. And and I, which could could force us to pay for staff out of the general fund. A- and uh that's where we pay for a minute uh for police officers primarily. I mean, virtually all of us in finance and admin are proportionately paid for uh through all funds. So we're just trying to, I just. Yeah, it's it's uh, it's not ideal, but that's on an interim basis. That's what I'm proposing.
Um Rob, my only concern is does Nick need more direct reports? Um we know, you know, this apartment is very busy. Um does he need direct reports that are outside the department?
Um well, we're uh. In the. When I bring, if we're able to do what I'm proposing. We're we're looking at three, three branches underneath Nick. We've just recently promoted Angela to be the deputy director and she's going to oversee uh the building officials. Uh our our building inspectors, code enforcement and parking enforcement. In in the likely scenario, we would promote. Actually, one of the planners to to supervise the the other planners. And then the city engineer would supervise the three engineers. And then we have Ellen, who. Who manages the office manager managing the clerical. So actually, in what I'm going to, what I would propose after we, what I hope to propose. He Nick would have four direct reports and he has far more than that right now. He would do, we would just be naming managers uh within his division.
I just wanted to see, I'm looking at you to say, hey, uh you know. And I think, I think we need to look to the. The team, they they need to go figure this out for your recognition, but they're going to have all this conversation.
No, I I was going to say the same thing. We got to remember, folks, what our role is versus what the mayor's role is. So. He'll bring a plan to us that he thinks he can support with Ian, the staff, that we get plus the plan.
Yep.
So we're not here to design the plan.
That's that's, that's the goal is, is just to create these two new job descriptions, make interim appointments and figure out a plan. So that we only, we only potentially do this one time.
That's great.
More to come next week.
So which are questions? Before we go to the good of the order. I will just throw a couple of things out for the good of the order, just to share with the full council. Uh one is that, Mayor, I'm not sure who was responsible for uh. I think you were working with the uh shipmates of the Lewis and Clark group and. Arranged to uh, we had a barbecue up at Clayton Park. Clayton Park is the facility that they. Uh improved for the for the benefit of the city, uh naming it after one of their shipmates that was uh killed while the vote was here. Killed in an automobile accident. Anyway, uh the mayor twisted both Mark and my arms as well as he and we were up. Uh barbecuing for probably, what would you estimate, forty?
Yeah, forty, forty plus, yeah.
Plus, a lot of them had their spouses with them, so we we cooked a whole lot of hamburgers and hot dogs, I could tell you. Uh but it it really, I think, was, I certainly. Uh enjoyed not so much flipping hamburgers, but visiting with the shipmates. And I know that they. Uh they certainly appreciated the acknowledgement by the city and welcoming them. So. Kudos to you, Mayor, on that. And the second one. Again, I'm not quite sure just who organized this last weekend's walking tour. Was that you and and Josh Farley together or?
Yeah, it was Josh Farley, it was Josh Farley's idea and I thought it was brilliant and I had to round it up all, I got, I had to figure out where the stops were and I put a little committee together and then. I had to uh uh find volunteers. And so we did our first ever walking tour. Bremerton and Kingston, uh Kingston did their first one this year. Bremerton's been doing it a few years and Josh Farley. Leads the community and a yeah, a group. And our goal was, we had the Chris Kraft rendezvous this weekend. Always looking for things for them to do and to draw them off the boats and get them out in our community. And so we had eleven stops. Uh the first Kathleen Wilson staffed and she was at the mural in front of the library. And there's a story that goes with that mural. And so each each volunteer was tasked with uh having a a. A one minute or so elevator speech about the significance of their stop. And the the tour was called uh Port Orchard uh Past and Present. And uh so from the library, they they walked down the pedestrian path. And found Etta Turner Park where council member Trinari was a Rotary member and was part of the group that built Etta Turner Park and told Etta's story. They came back down the path. We were going to have them go down Bay Street. Um except for just a different route, but the waterfront's just too nice. So we kept doubled back down the waterfront. Sent them through the farmer's market. They crossed uh the high flashing uh beacon there at Harrison and then. Uh Josh Johnson told uh the past and future plans for um the Polaris Theater. Uh from there, they came up the hill, stopped the Sydney Gallery. Uh when miss at uh at Kitsap in Sydney, they met me and I told, talked about the historic homes. Uh and we walked up the hill and I talked about um the the Sears and Roebuck home and uh, you know, the the Howe home. The the Harbor Master Home and Judge Sutton's home. So and the the uh the Howe Mansion and then. I handed them off to the Sydney Gala, to the Lock Cabin Museum. From there, they traveled up to the uh courthouse where council member Deener. Uh talked about the significance of the the uh the county campus up on the hill. They came down the hill and met up with council member Clausen, who talked about City Hall. A- and uh from there, they went to what was once uh Howe Hardware, which is Revival. And then Samantha Smith talked to them about the significance of that facility. Walked across the street, found John Morrissey, who talked about the community center rooms. And then from there, they were handed off to the staff at the uh uh Port of Bremerton to tour uh boats. And it was amazing. A lot of people weren't just the boaters. They came from other communities, Bremerton in particular. And because they've been doing this walking tour and this kind of resonated with them. So. I would say more than half did a self guided tour, but Josh brought a group of about forty. Um and had a megaphone and came to each stop and I I guesstimated more than a hundred people participated. So I think it was a. Great success and uh I really can't, I just uh organized the volunteers and I thank all of you that that uh participated on Saturday. I think it was a great event.
Well, as as one of those uh stops, I wanted to share with you, Mayor, I I was quite impressed. Uh there were, I thought, thousands that came through. Mark and I were talking before the meeting and we kind of settled at about a hundred forty five, a hundred fifty. Uh they were groups of two, four, six, forty. Uh when Josh brought the group down, all of them, at least at my location, were all very interested and lots of good questions. Enjoyed what they had seen. Uh and you know, I had an opportunity to visit with some of them and some of them were local residents, just wanted to take the tour. As the mayor said, uh there were some from uh quite a ways away. As well as, you know, just across the the Bay over in Bremerton. So I was impressed. I had a lot of fun. I enjoyed it. If. If you do this again, I certainly would raise my hand if you asked to. It was.
Once a month?
I don't know about once a month because the weather gets kind of iffy, but Saturday was a very nice day. But anyway, I just want. But anyway, I just wanted to call that out for the full council.
I definitely see this as being an annual event, it was very well received by the community, and I thought it was a blast.
Yeah, and you you said that to have a a one minute elevator speech, mine was more like five or seven minutes. But one of the funnier, yeah, one of the funnier stories that people appreciated was the public, public works administration building, when they built that, they installed the windows. In reverse, so that the windows didn't drain to the outside. And so they all got a take of, you know, something like that, sneaky by public works, but that they were fixed about seven years ago.
What what I found, you know, the mayor told us, we'll have your one minute speech, and it's like, what are you going to talk about City Hall? Here's City Hall. And fortunately, there were a couple groups that came through, just two, and I kind of developed my little spiel on the fly, based on their questions and their comments. And if they were interested in it, maybe others would, so I kind of built to where mine was in that five to seven minute as well.
Yes, when we were fixing the siding.
I pointed out that the the building's about to celebrate its twenty third birthday, and we are planning to do some, you know, improvements, so.
The other nice thing was in terms of timing, the there was electoral train observer training going on in the chambers. So the building was actually open, and then they could go in and see more about the lead certification or the northwestern art that if you've been in that building, you've seen. So, yeah, it was kind of cool that they could actually walk down through the building, to go downhill.
Nice.
What a fun, so thank you, Mayor, thank you, Josh. Anything else for the good of the order?
You know, just piggybacking on about, I think, what was it, Mayor, about a week and a half ago? The Seattle Times in one of their sections had a full page on things to do in Port Orchard. It was a day trip, and it listed like eleven things to do in Port Orchard. And you always, I piggybacking on this and the walking tour, you're talking about Fred, you know, or, you know, annual better stuff. We continue to get very positive publicity, you know, in our community. And we're going to see a lot more of this come through as we, you know, have our events that we're having with nonprofits, because the cruise is coming up and everything else. So, you know, kudos to city administration, you know, the employees.
Folks, is that Port Orchard is just a short walk away. Walk on to Seattle boat, walk on to the little boat and walk right downtown.
Yeah, Nick and I answered a few questions, but that was really driven by the Kitsap V C B. They're they're, they really, their new executive directors is doing well for us. She was the one that facilitated that article and and got that going, Nick and I just answered a few questions.
Anything else? I just wanted to point out to the council that we are thirty minutes early, based on the agenda, so.
Could have a job verbally, Josh.
I have nothing to do with Hoop's administration this meeting, but Mayor, we've set the bar. Being the dirt.